To work through our technical difficulties that we're having with some of our iPads, but we'll go ahead and get things started. The first item on our agenda is something that's very important, something that I would like to invite my fellow council to join me between the, somewhere between the columns here so that we can.
What are we doing?
I want you to come up here.
Oh.
What are you doing? What are you doing? We're just coming here. Alright, now, I would like to invite all of our law enforcement officials to come over here, please, if you would. And we have several with us tonight. Let's see you all, uh, just gather up here, both sides of the room, say it. We have, our instructions are to stay between the columns. Between the columns, so we're gonna stay between the columns. When everybody done. We even got Jared Godwin out tonight, look at there. There we go. First of all, thank you all for joining us this evening, because we have a special presentation that we would like to make to our police department. We are going to create today a proclamation recognizing January the ninth as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Every day is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, as far as I'm concerned, but we officially are proclaiming January the ninth through this proclamation. It says, "Whereas the City of Tifton recognizes the extraordinary service and sacrifice of the men and women in law enforcement who keep our community safe, enforce the rule of law, and respond in times of crisis; and whereas Tifton is the proud home of many dedicated police officers who put their lives on the line to keep our community safe; and whereas these officers stand as leaders educating the community about the importance of public safety; and whereas we appreciate the extraordinary sacrifices and efforts made by these officers and their family members on a daily basis to protect our schools, workplaces, roadways, and homes; and whereas today and every day it is fitting to honor our local law enforcement who bravely and selflessly risk their lives to protect our families, visitors, and businesses. Now therefore, I, Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of the Tifton City Council, do hereby proclaim January the ninth as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day for the City of Tifton, given under my hand and seal the seventh day of January, and I have signed this, and Jessica White, our city clerk, has signed this. So we would like to say thank you, we appreciate you, we love you, we respect you. We are so very thankful that you're part of this team. We wouldn't be the same without you. So thank you very, very much. Buddy, I will give you this proclamation, okay? Or should I say, Chief, I will give you this proclamation. So, thank you. Proud of y'all. Proud of y'all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I had to go to bed over. We've got a good team with the Tifton Police Department. We are very thankful for them. So I would encourage the public, as you see these men and women out doing their job, if you see them out on a, on a quick break to have lunch, please just stop and tell them thank you, and that we appreciate the efforts that they, that they give to this community, and we're just very appreciative of all of that. Pete, I would like for you to introduce our newest team member to the Tifton team.
I will. Thank you, Mayor. And as each of you know, we're now in interim basis for DDA and Main Street. And through a couple of conversations with Bruce Green, he and I have had great dialogue about the future, and what, where we are, where we're about to go, and then obviously, when we fill this role permanently, how, how we're going to get there. And through discussions with him, he's accepted to come on as an interim. And Bruce, I just, I'd like for you to just line up, and I know everybody knows you, but just talk about, you know, your decision and where you think, think we are as a Main Street and DDA and city, and just, you know, we're glad to have you. So I just, I wanted to give you a few minutes to acknowledge that and make you understand how important this is, and how much we appreciate you, you deserve in our capacity.
Well, thank you, Pete. I appreciate that. I'm excited about having the opportunity at this point in my life to come back home. I texted a friend in Atlanta and said, "I feel like Rip Van Winkle," who went to sleep for twenty years and woke up and things had changed. So, but there are certain things about Tifton, Georgia that, that do not change. It's the quality of the people that live here that work and strive to make this place truly exceptional out there in rural Georgia. You have the banners, the awards, the accolades to prove it, but, so it's gonna be exciting. It's gonna be challenging. I, I can already tell just in the few hours that I've been here, it's a, it's a quick learning process to kind of pick up where, where things are. But again, lots of excitement. I've heard a lot about some projects today. That's always exciting. So I just look forward to working with the city staff, the mayor and council, the downtown development authority, the city attorney, the DDA attorney, and all of you. So thank you for asking me to take a part in this.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Just to let everyone know, just a reminder, this is our workshop meeting, so we will not be voting tonight. Tonight is strictly discussion for the items that we'll be voting upon in our regular meeting, which will be the third Monday in January. I hope everyone had a nice holiday. Did you, were you gonna say something?
I just wanted to thank Pete. Who, who better to, to lead this DDA than the person that put us on the path to where we are on Main Street?
No question.
And for Pete to set that up and work, I mean, it's just a testament to, to Pete, and, and I mean, it very, I mean, just remarkable when I saw what that was, so.
It's exciting, isn't it?
Very exciting.
It is. It's very exciting.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Oh, that was your chair, sorry. As I was saying, I hope everyone had a very nice holiday. We've got great things on the horizon for, for Tifton in 2019. Just looking forward to what the new year brings. I did speak with Councilman Terrell earlier. He's going to be coming in a little bit late. He had a doctor's appointment, so hopefully he'll be joining us shortly. If anyone would like an agenda to follow along, they are on the dius back here. You can certainly pick that up and follow along with us. The next item on our agenda, we are now under the old business section, and that is recommendations to the, to update the land development code. And I'll turn this over to Pete and Rob to update us on that.
Thanks, sir. I guess I'll start. Mayor Council, we've talked about this a few times, and if you remember, this is about the situation we're dealing with in Goodrich Alley. We've talked about it, and from aesthetic, from public safety standpoint, from where we're going with regards to growth, et cetera, et cetera. There's, we, I brought this to you just so we could discuss it, so we could forecast any potential problems that we may have. And in our last meeting, you directed Rob to look at some examples of what other cities may be doing. Again, nothing, no one's the same, but he, he did look at that, and he'd like to share that information. And then before you tonight, there's just, there's really three options that we, we're here, ready to talk, and whatever your wishes on how you see this, and where you think we need to go, I think is, is important, but we're ready to, to take the next step, if you are so. Rob?
Yeah, basically, I looked at Valdosta, Thomasville, and Albany, and I, I did not find anything in their ordinances that, that any man would prohibit fencing in the downtown commercial areas. But what I did see is, you know, certain design requirements, heights requirements, opaque fences. For instance, in Albany, their, their riverfront district talks about fences along the alleyway being a minimum of six feet, seventy-five percent opaque. I think Valdosta is basically, you know, I believe they also adopted the land development codes just like we did, so theirs is very, is, is the same as ours. In Thomasville, basically, they have no restrictions as far as fencing downtown. We're really much about, you know, anywhere in their district, but they do have, you know, a, a fencing diagram about the type of fences, what, you know, what type of fences you can have, whether or not you can grow vines on them. It's fairly detailed. But again, it's not restricting of the fact that you can have a fence. It's really what type of fence you can have. It's been pretty consistent throughout everything I've seen, not only just in these surrounding cities, but also throughout the country, because they don't like chain, chain link fences. And so what I'm picking up on really is, is that we're not looking at, you know, prohibiting fencing. It's more along the lines of what type of fences are appropriate. But that doesn't mean that you don't have the, the authority, you know, to decide if you want to restrict fencing in certain areas, how you want to restrict them. But again, I've not been able to find anything that really says you can't have the fence. It's more along the lines of design.
And I did describe this and briefed the, the DDA board, so they're well aware of that, and I'd sure like to get Bruce's, this kind of input, as when you talk about aesthetics, and talking about, again, safety, especially in the alleys where it abuts public property. I think this is where we're really talking about. So it really is, it's your, your desire and how you want to see this. Again, the options are, we could maybe make a decision not to allow any fences, just and again, in a tight rectangle, it's commercial downtown business. If we do away with fencing altogether, we could revise the current LDC and talk about future language that identifies certain standards, et cetera, to protect the integrity, and, you know, protect obviously the private property issue. And then, or thirdly, just not make any changes and just leave it alone the way it is. So if I had to make a staff recommendation, I'd probably say number two, where Rob and I pick some suggestions for some LDC language changes, work very closely with the, with the historical board to say, "Look, you know, we, we need to protect this since it is an historical area, but we do need to have some control measures when we talk about walls, fences, et cetera," especially as it abuts public property. And I think that's the whole basis of this.
Didn't we say there's a safety issue with the, with the current fence that was put downtown, as far as a fire car getting to, to the building?
Well, I think Danny has looked at it, and Chief Bennett has looked at it, and on paper, heights, setbacks, where it is, that property owner meets all the X's and O's. Reality, if we had a fire in any of those buildings, from the theater down to Jamie Caters' building, to the dance studio, if we had a fire and we had to pull in the backside of that, obviously it'd be an issue. You can't pull hose, you can't call there. So again, it'd be very complicated, and whomever is on scene first, they would have to make the decision on how to get in there. And I know what that decision probably will be. So, life and safety, I think they're, Danny or Chief Bennett, they're in check with regards to regulations, marshal, state marshal.
What we're gonna do is it's gonna slow down us being able to respond to the business. If somebody's in there, you know, if they're on the second floor or whatever, when we pull up, if we come in those alleys, that is already tight enough as it is. You're very limited on the room that you can do. When you have to pull hoses off, and they're two hundred feet long, you know, is it gonna be long enough now, since we got to deliver around fences? We're gonna have to cut locks and loop gates and get to the building. That's gonna take longer to be able to get inside of that structure. Whereas coming off of Main Street, so where do you just come off of Main Street? Well, the quickest way to get someone safely might be through that. So when we continue to let the fences be put up our walls, for whatever reason they may have, that's gonna delay what we can do for them. That's gonna put them more at jeopardy, more property loss, you'll see, being part of insurance rates and everybody else out of there.
One of the things we had discussed, and I don't know if this, I'm, but dealing with, you know, not having a fence, you know, adjacent to the right of one. I've, I've seen that in other places. So you, basically you could have, you know, side yard fences, but not any fencing along the right of one, which I think would give you the access. So that, that's something that I see, and may not be something we can consider.
I think we should consider that.
It'd probably be the max I'd be willing to do right there, honestly, because at the end of the day, we're, we're here to, to make sure that we protect the citizens and property of this community.
Sure.
And from what Chief says, I mean, you know, this, one fence could cause a lot of problems for a lot of people, because there's people that live up there, there's eventually people that, I mean, I know they're.
There's more development that's going to happen, yeah.
Uh, so it's either take no fences at all, or at max, what you're saying, to the minimum.
Restrict along the right of one.
To the right of one.
And, and probably looking at also restricting chain link fences, which, which is kind of standard.
And that's very consistent with what I've.
But the other side is, you know, people want to protect their property.
Sure.
So we have to balance all of that. People protecting their property, but, but us being able to protect the public in general.
Yeah.
Sure, exactly.
So B is really, or number two would be the way we all want to go, let us put some language.
In the right of leg.
Yes.
Kinds, heights, et cetera, or at least we have some standards, and then work with the historical board.
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that, so.
I think it's fair, and it's, it's a great way to approach it. And again, it's not just for fire. I mean, a year and a half ago, Chief, we had a suspect on the roof of the theater. So when you talk about the dogs, or you talk about response, I mean, it's just not fire. So if we ever had something that, that needed attention, we just have these obstacles. So we'll, we'll take a look at this and put it in written form and bring it back to you.
Okay. Good deal. Thank y'all for that information.
Thank you.
Item number four, Commerce Way Redevelopment Fund Grant Project Scope Revision. Pete, you want to fill us in on that?
This is one packet, yeah. Bruce, Bruce, can I give this to you, please? Okay, um, so, uh, this too, I'll remind you, this is the Commerce Way grant that the City of Tifton applied for. We're, we're in the second year, over two years now, that the grant was to demolish two buildings.
Before you get into this, can I ask a question? Do I need to recuse myself from this discussion?
Well, you had nothing to do with it, but her.
Business partner does. My business partner, Melissa Brock, in my real estate company?
She's the one that brought someone.
She's the one that, that.
Someone approached the city.
Had something on.
I would say yes, though.
I think I need to. Oh, yeah, so, okay. I'm going to go hide in the stairwell. Do not forget that I'm there.
We'll call, don't call us, we'll call you.
Yeah. Bruce, I'm counting on you. Come get me when you're done.
Alright, then, thank you. So this is, it started demolishing two buildings, three hundred and forty something thousand dollars to do so. It took a long time to get out of the state. I briefed you when we did get word. There was a problem with Jack Stone's building. We took that off the table, went forward with the, the music store. The plan was to demolish it. DDA board understood what we were doing. They still, DDA, we were gonna do the parking lot right there where the music store is now. All that building would come down, and the parking lot would go up. That was the latest, and that's what we were ready to, to go forward with. Budget was done. That's what the state had designed the scope of work via the grant. So probably three weeks ago, I did have someone approach me, a developer and a real estate broker or agent, saying that there was a developer from Thomasville area that he was very, very interested in the music building. So when you talk about interested, what does that mean? He has put together a, obviously an outline of what he wanted to do, and in short, he wants to purchase the building and turn the upstairs into loft-style residential living and retail on the bottom, with the caveat that in the back, in the alleyway, he would take out a portion of the building that was added on years and years ago. If he was allowed to do this, he would allow the city and the DDA to have ten to twelve public parking spaces behind the building. And we could put ten to twelve in the back there. And he would obviously rehab the, the entire building himself. So the developer, talking about incentives, talking about purchasing the property, talking about everything that a, you know, a very, very normal type incentive package, he knows it very well, and has approached us to say, "Would you float this idea and see what, what the city council would say?" What this means, in, in short, that this building would go back on the tax rolls. I have had a conference call with DCA just a couple of weeks ago to talk about this, even if it's, if it's a really possible. They said yes. The budget, the RD, the RD budget that I handed out with that packet is actually what Bob Robertson, the grant administrator for this grant, and the state have put together. So we can use the money. As a downfall, we would deobligate a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, but in the long run, for demolition purposes, that would, it really wouldn't matter anyway. So we would gain the building, back on the tax rolls, save a historical building, gain ten to twelve public parking spaces in the rear on Goodrich Alley, and still be able to hold this grant on. So I bring this forward to you, and Bruce and I have to be able to decipher, reach a decision, in so much as that, obviously, timing is, is really overboard on this one. But the fact that the DDA's, would have a, a hand in this with financial obligations and their concept of, of all this. So depending on what you say or the questions that you have, we'll carry it back to the DDA, talk this through to them, but hopefully we could render some kind of decision in the pathway forward here in January.
Talk to us more about these terms.
Okay. Again, this, this would be for the DDA. And usually when developers come in, they'll do a ten-year lease, and this would mean that the DDA or the city would buy the, the building, because that was part of the overall agreement. They would lease it back for one dollar a year. They would have the option to purchase it at the end of ten years. So again, it's just a way of incentive packages, a way that developers do this. They use the DDA as the vehicle to purchase the property. A lot of times, the DDA will profit back because they, they want to buy it. This would be for, obviously, city tax purposes only. But all the other incentives he's asking for, again, this is just his version. We have the ability, the city will do, you know, A through D, but, you know, we're not gonna do F and G or H. So.
Not gonna do F.
That, that's our, you know, that is our, that's our flexibility. And again, I haven't talked to the developer about specifics. I'm trying to kind of describe the, the concept and see if you'd be interested in, again, changing and shifting paradigms, again, with regards to this building and this grant.
Alright, so you say that this property will go back on the tax roll?
It would.
If the DDA's gonna purchase it, lease it for ten years, so for ten years, this property would not be on the tax roll. Is that correct?
No.
Does the government need to deal with all of it?
Uh, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think DDA.
For ten years?
Yeah, then this is right here.
I mean, they could get enterprise on, and either way, I mean, they probably would apply for that, for this.
Yeah, but the DDA building.
We'd do all of that.
What are we getting?
Yeah.
What, what do we get out of this?
What are you getting?
I mean, what's the city gonna get if, if they don't pay taxes?
So, that's what I'm saying.
Well, after the period, you would.
So after ten years.
After ten years.
Yeah, but it says, um, the purchase price at the end of the ten years, after we help him acquire financing, is that what he's trying to say? In a perfect world, what he wants us to do is help him acquire financing. He will purchase the building, lease it to him for a dollar a year, provide him with the hookups and all that good stuff, and, and dumpsters for demolition purposes. Um, of course, I guess he'd be responsible for paying along, um, but it would be a.
Right.
Hmm.
Financing be, be his state, and just, that's what, you know.
Yeah, what he'll have in it is the money to refurbish.
That, that's correct.
Everything.
He, he, he up-fronts his money.
Okay, um.
It's the same thing we're doing with the length of man or what's now considered Forty-One Main when it was originally completed.
Same, same deal.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that DDA is, is gonna be in agreement with this, knowing the DDA board.
I'm not sure if I am.
Um, the, the reason, the reason, of course, it was.
I agree, that G and H is definitely off the board.
Well, initially, the, the DDA was looking at creating parking spaces down there, um, with the demolition of those buildings. And I think, I think it was like twenty-seven apartment spaces originally or something.
I can't remember the exact number.
We're talking maybe ten, ten to twelve, which is, which is good, but I'm just knowing the DDA, I'm not sure they're, they'd be in favor of this. Although, I, I tend to, to favor it myself.
Yeah, I tend to favor it. I mean, I, and when Jessica says, "We've, we've done this for others," you know, to, and if it's truly a historical building.
It was the, DDA owns it. We're about to sell it.
But you're.
And they're doing it along the ridge. Well, when we did the length of man along the ridge, wasn't it, um, didn't the person who ended up helping, didn't they actually own the property, ended up losing it? And we had a lot of background?
No, they took it, took it on, had it on.
Okay. I, I just, from my, from my recollection, I would think the deal worked out with the length of man, you know, as.
Well, the city spent, spent a lot of money on that.
Exactly.
But, but it's worked out for Forty-One Main at this point. To, to avoid tearing down a historical building, have, you know, these apartments downtown, I mean, that's what we've done.
Exactly.
With Mr. Harper and, and all of these things. To do that versus tearing it down for a parking lot?
We didn't.
I'd rather do this than.
The DDA didn't purchase Mr. Harper's buildings and listen back to him for that, and then sell to him for that.
I re, I realize that, that part, but.
He'd do that, he'd do this deal every day of the week.
Oh, yeah.
But that doesn't mean we, you know, that that's the deal we do. And the concept is I'd rather have that than that parking lot.
I mean, the parking has been, is, is the issue. So now we're gonna create more parking problems.
Well, parking's an issue, yes, but as I always say, we've got a walking problem, a parking problem.
It's a walking problem, not a parking.
I mean, the, the parking lot's never full. Right now, it's never full. I mean, there's some things going on, I think, in the future that will bring more things downtown, but right now, it's not full. And there's parking available. People don't want to walk.
They'll walk that far to Walmart.
They will.
But they will not walk that far downtown.
They won't walk, you know, half a block.
That's right.
I think, this is, we're starting, you know, behind, behind par on this one, because it has been floated that we're gonna do, you know, big parking lot. And this really came out of left field, but I agree, you know, when you talk about the essence of downtown, I mean, this really is, and this guy comes with high, high recommendations on the projects that he has done. He is the real deal. So we would be gaining a, a real valuable.
And we see some other projects that, I noticed, he makes mention that he's done some in some other projects. Is there a way you can kind of create a resume for me, so I can look at it and see what he's kind of doing? I'm not saying he's gonna create some janky building or whatnot, but, you know, at the same time, I thought we were kind of doing a project that's gonna help relieve the parking issues that we've had downtown. And that would be creating more people downtown with less parking spots.
It, it's, it is, I think it's, it's one of those situations where a smart decision has to be made. But I really, I think we could have parking, we could have a parking deck, and there'd still be something that, that's not, not right with this. So the way we look at it, as the growth, the tax base, the incentives, the, what's happening downtown, I think it all has to come into play. And what, what I'd like to do is Bruce and I talk with this developer some more to say, "Look, we gotta talk about these terms, and if he's not negotiable, then we know the answer." But to say, "Look, we have, we have some parameters here, and if you're willing to meet the parameters, we can put together another scenario."
Do you have some contacts in these communities that he's done a project with to kind of see what they've offered? We can be a head of security.
Same, yeah, same thing. But I can certainly put that together, because Frank is right. I, I could, I could have the best song and dance, and the DDA is just, you know, they're not gonna go for it.
Right.
But I want to make sure that we understand the lines now. Their input is very, very important. However, this is a City of Tifton project, so.
Speaking of the end of the day.
End of the day, it's the city.
I mean, I can appreciate what the DDA wants, but.
That's right.
The City of Tifton is running the show.
That's, that's why I'm telling you that, that it's very, very important.
Just the fact.
And if you probably asked that man right now, and put him on the spot, I'm, I could guess what he'll say, but I'd probably approach, Bruce, would it that be probably most feasible to approach the developer and kind of walk through the terms and understand it, get some more references, talk to the DDA, and then bring it to you in just a couple of weeks, so a decision could be rendered either way.
And also, I remember a few months ago, Bruce did some research on that building and found a historical value, that I think. that I think it was the first African-American hotel in Tifton, I believe.
We're gonna tear down a historical building for a parking lot, seriously?
Before Newfront was built, that's where the center of the African-American Commercial District was, and about nineteen thirties or forties, they built Newfront, and most of the African-American businesses moved there. That is a very significant historic building in, in terms of culture and heritage. And Mr. Andrew Amay, this particular person that you all are talking about, um, I have a kind of a historical background with him, when I was Director of Rural Development in DDA. We, the Department of Community Affairs, worked with him and the City of Bangor. He had purchased a building very much like this building, and we were able to put some very complicated financing together using One Georgia. Um, and if you go right down to downtown Bangor, it is remarkable what he has done, and there, Sylvester's known, but, um, I, I'm, you know, I haven't seen him in years, but I just know that he has the capacity to do something remarkable.
Can, can we find a way to say yes, and not, you know?
I'm trying.
You know, we look for ways to say no, in this case, let's look for a way to say yes.
You're okay with Amy?
I, I just said, let's look for a way to say yes.
Let's negotiate.
You know?
So I think that's best for Bruce and I to really approach him, but I'm, I'm bringing it to you. We need to really render a decision, we need to go on this one, so, okay, we will do it.
And then, I think, I think, but, but, it's, there is a historical.
Okay, see?
I don't work down a historical building for a landmark, I'm sorry, that's just, that's just not right.
Isn't there a song about?
At the point, I didn't know that a historic nature, you know, he's just told me information I didn't have before. Maybe I missed it before, but I had not heard that before, so, you know, too many historical things are being torn down.
Okay.
All right, uh, the next item on our agenda is item number five, new alcohol license for dollar and grocery and meats, located at nine ten South Central, and that, um, is in our packet. Jessica, is there anything we need to add on that?
At the last meeting, you all tabled that one.
Yeah.
They had some inspections, the building had been vacant for about three years, um, and, hold on. They are not here, but they did, in your packet, they provided the most recent inspection from the Department of Agriculture, and they still have some things that need to be checked on, completed, so hopefully, by the council meeting and y'all vote, they'll have those taken care of.
Okay.
They're, um, they're planning on having those done by Friday.
Okay.
So by the time we meet again, we should have an update.
Okay, very good.
But based on their alcohol, you know, everything is okay, it's just the building part.
Okay, all right, um.
So, wait a minute, so is there any legal reason that we would turn that down?
No, there aren't.
I mean, I don't want to get into some legal fight over this, so.
We, we've had a lot of communication with them, they're on track, and they've done a lot since our last conversations have worked, to be.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, and Councilman Terrell has just joined us, and I think you have a plaque to present, do you have some information? Something, a little something, something?
Oh, yes. This is a plaque presented to the City of Tifton from the Tifton McDonald's Invitation.
Oh, how nice!
Awesome. In recognition of our commitment and support.
Very nice.
We've got a special spot for that.
Of the McDonald's invitation.
We need to put that on the shelf where.
We've got a special spot, thank you.
That is very nice of them to do that. That had a, I tell you, the night that I was there, there were a ton of people. Let's say, I was there one night, you were the next, and you were the next, I think.
I was there on Friday.
Yes, okay, I was Thursday then, I was shocked at how many people were there.
That's a huge town.
It is huge.
From all across the country.
Uh-huh, and several of the, um, hotel managers were there, and the hotels were full, and so, it was.
We, we helped, they got the banner made, and we had that put up for, so Johnny and I, we went about six, five, six months ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
So anything we could do to help with the hosting.
They also did a very nice thing the night that I was there, they did a recognition of all the first responders. So that was, that was just a nice thank you to them that, that night, too. So we appreciate, appreciate that event being held in Tifton and all the hard work of the, the volunteers and those who organized that, and all the sponsors who are part of that, so that's a, that's a very, that's a very nice gift to receive from them. All right, Johnny, we are getting ready to start new business, so we're on item number six, and that would be the review of bids for lawnmowers.
Scotty's gonna end it, of course.
All right.
Six and seven, eight.
All right, Scotty, you just go through until you're done.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and we do have several bids for your review here, so I'll simply pause at each one for questions, and you tell me when to proceed.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is bids that were received for commercial lawnmowers for our landscaping department. Uh, we've requested bids for one sixty-inch commercial mower and one fifty-two-inch mower. Uh, these were received on December fifth. Uh, only one vendor was within specs, and he actually had two different mowers that he submitted. So on the recommendation, uh, we recommend purchasing the sixty-inch X-Mark, which is a eight oh one option, from Chris's Mower Clinic, uh, at a price of eight thousand six dollars, and this mower being used by our right-of-way crews. And then, we also recommend purchasing the fifty-two-inch mower, which is a seven fifty-one option from Chris's Mower Clinic, uh, for a price of seventy-two twenty-four, and this will be used at our wastewater treatment.
Okay, and that, that information is in our packet?
Yes, this is a budgeted item on capital improvement, so we, we need to replace two, two lawnmowers, and this is, um, part of our annual process when we talk about equipment.
Yes, and there was, there was ten thousand each in the budget for those mowers.
Right, okay.
How long would it take someone to, we set out, or send out a bid, give them time to respond?
Uh, Tifton has a process with a, uh, mowing viewpoint.
So it's in a couple of weeks.
So do we contact as many people as we can, I mean, you're like, uh, and I know that there's more than one.
We do, we try to call all the local vendors, and there was three, three vendors that supplied bids for these, but two of them were not in specs.
In specs, okay.
And what he means by specs, it's like the mower deck, for instance, and we call for a commercial-grade deck. Uh, these guys could really, if you go out to Lowe's and get a lawnmower from Lowe's and put it on the right-of-way, we, those guys would probably wear it, slap out in probably three weeks.
Yeah.
So what he's, that's what he's talking about, when we spec it, we're very, very, um, specific, and the good thing we've done is standardize our mowers, meaning that if they're an X-Mark, they're all X-Marks, so the parts are changeable, uh, Chris's has been really a champion with us, great community partner.
He's a good person.
X-Marks are good, very popular by any.
It's really, it's just a, what we use them for and how much we use them for, I can't say enough about it. Again, there's a lot of good products, but this really, really does good for our right-of-way maintenance.
Okay, any other questions, comments about the lawnmowers? All right, Scotty?
All right, next is mini excavators and matching trailers, uh, same thing, we requested bids on these, and we received these on December fifth, and we did have a lot of participation in this bid. We had nine vendors that submitted bids, uh, but only three were within the required specs. We had a budget of a hundred and forty thousand, uh, and we do recommend, uh, purchasing the Hyundai sixty, which is from Crosby Equipment, at a price of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Uh, Tifton has a current relationship with Crosby Equipment, we have current equipment that was purchased by them, they provide excellent service, we actually have some Hyundai excavators in our fleet that have been here for over twenty years, uh, so it's good equipment as well.
Mini X, well, Public Works has sometimes a habit of every year, purchasing backhoes. You probably remember that, you know, from years past, and Scotty and Jeff, we've changed the philosophy a little bit in our waterways, and what, what we do in the application for the work, a Mini X is the little, small-looking excavator with a long bucket on it, and what we're able to do with these is to get in small spots and not tear up the yard. Uh, we have special attachments that they, the guys have recommended, we could put a mulching head on one, we could put a jackhammer on one, so it really is versatile, drop it off on a trailer on the curb, we won't tear up the pavement, we could get on some of these property or go down a ditch line and do maintenance work. It really has changed the application of how we do it and where we could do it, so very, very impressive on what we've, what we've done here lately.
Okay, and those, the bid information's also in our packet for these.
It is.
Any questions, comments? All right, uh, Scotty, you wanna go on to the wheeled excavator?
Yes, sir, it's me, sorry. Uh, again, we requested bids for a wheeled excavator with a four-foot bush mower. Uh, we received three bids on this equipment, budgeted amount was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All three were within specs, however, again, Crosby, uh, was, was a low bid there by a good bid, so we recommend purchasing the Hyundai one eighty from Crosby Equipment at a price of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay, any comments? Thank you for staying under budget, that's a, that's a good thing, yeah, on all three.
That's about a little, about a lot.
I know, exactly.
Two fifty, now it's at one eighty-four.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Okay.
I know, we, we, we know where that, we know where that flow from is.
We'll start cutting.
That's capital, no bottom line.
Okay.
You got to cut yourself on the front side.
All right, let's move on to number nine. All right, Scotty, you wanna go over the bids for Golf Street and Fullwood Park?
I will.
Okay.
Uh, this recommendation actually comes from BSG Engineering, they, they did a lot of work on this. Uh, but this project went out for bid as well, it was for, uh, headwalls on Golf Street, which is between Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-Eighth, that's the big drainage canal, uh, and for half miles of, uh, walking trail in Fullwood Park.
If you remember, Mayor Council, we bid this along with a water line, or sewer line replacement, and.
That's correct.
The contractor that won it wasn't comfortable with the concrete aspect of it, and we just, we weren't comfortable, so we put just the concrete back out, they agreed to that, uh, so that's why we had a hit, a little delay, but Golf Street is, is, is a really, really dangerous area, so you have to know what you're doing on this one. Uh, pretty major work, but it's been needed for years and years, so that'll be great. But just as important, the finish work and how it looks on the walking trail. So I'm very comfortable with the, how we bid this out, with just concrete and, um, experts to finish the two projects, and that's how we.
Let me ask you this, when that, I guess, it's been, probably had a decade or so, since they initially fixed that color, many, many moons ago, and I've lived on that, in that area all my life, basically, so, um, what was the, what was the cause for the collapse, what, what caused all that, you know, I mean, is there anything that ESD's looked at? I mean, historically?
I, I was in here sometimes, I just don't know, I would, I would.
We have done.
It was just poorly constructed, and it just, you know.
Well, I, I think there's, what we're finding, years ago, the, the piping, uh, that is underneath the roads, we have a grade separation, uh, meaning that the pipe is here, and the water's here. Uh, we had a lot of erosion in the past, but what we've really done, probably the last three years, we're cleaning upstream, cleaning downstream, and relieving all the pressure points, because when that water gets flowing, if you know on Golf Street, right by the convenience store, that is a literally, that is a, you could float a boat down that, without much water. So if you take Golf Street and you consider the volumes, and if the canals were not clean, and the pipes weren't, you know, at grade, or we, we weren't ready, and all this, this, obviously, this pressure on those walls, I think we have a serious erosion problem, and I think that's what's happened.
You said Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-Eighth, right?
It's between Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-Eighth.
So this is the drainage from Lake Mary.
That's correct.
To, I don't know if that's a pond, or whatever that is, off Kent Road.
Right. Major volumes of water, but we, we really have done some extensive cleaning work, so the water flows. But I think, years ago, I think to answer your question, we've had some serious erosion problems, and it just beat the bank out.
Yeah, this is a high bank, it's about twelve feet from the road down to the bottom of the ditch at this area.
John, we just fixed one on, uh.
We went to look at that, I think.
Yeah, what was the one we fixed on, um?
Uh, Timmins?
Timmins, same thing.
Yeah.
Water beat the stuff out of that embankment, and just eroded it, and, uh, I don't care how much rock we had in it, but.
It's not gonna.
It annihilates it.
They use sandbags.
Same thing, with Johnny's.
Sandbag works for a minute.
Not for fifteen years, it doesn't.
And they do work for a minute, you're right about that, for a minute, yeah.
Yeah.
So the plans for Golf, you'll have a big head wall, you'll have, you could.
Behind that pond down there.
And make it wide enough.
Yeah. Behind it, that, that, when that water comes out of that Akak Lake, whatever that is over there.
Uh, Lake Mary?
Tom Akak's Lake, man, when it, when it, when that water comes.
Yeah, because right there, it helps keep them overflowing.
And when it overflow, chew, yeah, it, it washes, washes up.
Previously, there were two pipes, and they combined that to one, and it was.
That's a amazing problem. You did this, you did this?
Well, no. No, I know we did some work not so long ago, and put some extra southern concrete came in and did some work in there, too.
Well, it, it's, uh, it's kind of neat, that, when that water comes, it just comes, for a post out there, when it rains heavily like that.
Yeah.
It fell there and at Twenty-Eighth Street, we did something at Twenty-Eighth Street.
What was that, it was a, it was a, I want to say that was the same, when that happened, was when, uh, the high school, it was nineteen ninety-eight, when they had a tornado, I guess, that come through, and they had graduation and all.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, I think that was when that was, when that code, when all that collapsed. Yeah.
All right.
I'm glad it's finally been fixed, thank you so much.
And they're gonna love you to death.
On the, um, walking trail improvements, Fullwood Park, does that include Dog Park improvements, recreation?
It's, it will encompass that, the concrete is for the walking trail pathway, and then we do have designated monies for the interior, which will be the fencing, et cetera, so. But it's all gonna look good, I met with some committee members last week, in fact, and it'll really be done right, but the walking trail will be, that's gonna be the greatest factor and the high, most high visibility for the community in using the park, not affecting the Frisbee Golf, um, course, and, uh, we're taking steps not only to clean up some of the bushes areas, we're not taking anything out, but we have poop bag stations to, uh, water, so I think from the walking trail to the interior of this, it would be really welcome.
I'm sorry?
What is the length of the walking trail?
Here's, here's a rough sketch of the walking trail, kind of, you kind of see how ladies in the park are there.
And all the, you know, we've raised a bunch of money for, you know, to go towards the Dog Park, so that money's, you know, just been sitting earmarked, and will be ready to, uh, to be spent, a lot of people donated money.
So no public funds are being used for the Dog Park.
This is a great park, because the park has.
I don't know, that's entirely true, but there's, but there is a lot of money that's been, yeah, dedicated and donated and raised towards the Dog Park.
Okay, we know, we met with those ladies around, the planners and that kind of thing.
Jack, introduce us to a group that, so we'll have, we have the Tree Board now, we have the Garden Club, and then we have, uh, another group that's really interested in talking about native plants. Uh, and, you know, we had a great talk about maintenance, we had to talk about areas, because we just can't plant something and let it go in, in the really, um, the high-travel areas. However, I did suggest to them, right there, again, the walking trail and what's gonna happen on the interior of the walking trail, on the outskirts, I've asked them to pick some plants, native plants, in some areas, and we create actually beds. Uh, so they're gonna make a butterfly garden, uh, with native plants, they're going to do some other species that are supposed to be in that park, so I appreciate the ladies doing that, and that's gonna be exciting. And, you know, if I think of it, if you, if you take Fullwood Park, we could, we could have literally a little miniature quasi-botanical garden that's where people come and enjoy it, so I really, the end product, I have some great, great hope for.
Was that, was that again?
Just a second.
I mean, I know we got this.
We, we're actually gonna go ahead and meet with some of the contractors this week, just, we're set and poised and ready. And five decisions.
Is the total, if you did a lap around it, would be what, about?
Half a mile.
Half a mile?
Okay, good. Did it purposely so you could measure, so you can do one, you make two laps, it's a mile, so it's easy to keep track.
How wide is the track, or, uh?
Six feet, I'm sure. I'm pretty sure six feet, uh, does that sound right to you?
I think so.
I think that's right.
When we have our pre-meeting, what, what I'd like to do is I'd like to pull some power, I, I want. When we have our pre-meeting, what, what I'd like to do is I'd like to pull some power, I, I want to put some lighting in the areas that people feel comfortable going to do it.
Absolutely.
Jessica, should we announce the date of the ribbon cutting or should we just, for the Dog Park, or should we just let that light on the moment?
I got lots of dogs. Let sleeping dogs, let sleeping dogs lie.
You will, you will do that.
Nothing like a little picture.
He was waiting on that. Jack was waiting on that one, he stayed up two nights.
I know you are, and we appreciate it. All right, Scotty, you want to go over the state contract?
Let me just finish that recommendation. That, that contractor is KW Underground.
Yeah.
And the total is two forty-four, one twenty-eight eighteen.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments before we move on to the fleet vehicles? Okay.
Okay, so on December fifth as well, we, we held bid opening vehicles. We had budgeted seven vehicles. Unfortunately, no one turned out for that. We had a pre-bid in which one of the local vendors did come, representing Griffin, but, but on the bid date, no one came. So, we reached out to government contract, government sales, and requested bids for those vehicles. So, we are recommend, recommending that we utilize state contract government sales for the purchase of six of the seven vehicles. And we recommend utilizing Allen Vigil Ford as the supplier of the government sales contract for the delivered price of one fifty-six, two sixty-five. And budgeted there was one ninety originally.
Any comments, questions?
So, we budgeted one ninety for seven?
For seven, correct.
So, we're only going to buy six?
We did, when I, talking with Wayne, we have some details to work out on one of the vehicles, just where monies come from. So, we weren't ready to move forward with that vehicle at this time, but, but we are with six of them. Seven would fit in there nicely though, without a problem.
Okay.
That was a sales pitch.
That's right. Getting you ready for next time.
Thanks, Wayne. Tighten them up.
It just blew right over our heads. Okay, any other questions, comments? Oh, you did. Guess he heard it. Surprise, surprise. Okay, any other questions, comments on these fleet vehicles? Everybody good? Okay, thank you very much, Scotty. Next item on our agenda is to set the council meeting schedule for twenty-ninth. There is a calendar in our packet. Many of our meetings do fall on holidays, because many holidays do fall on a Monday. But, um, if you'll look at the, uh-
The two conflicts that I know of right now were Martin Luther King, David, that'll be our next meeting. But we typically go to the Tuesday following and Labor Day. Of course, there, from time to time, may be some that come up, but right now are the only changes.
Do we not move the meeting on President's Day? Is that not considered, is it a holiday on President's Day?
It's not a city holiday.
Okay, okay, I'm sure. All right, so everyone's got a copy of that. Any questions or comments concerning the proposed meeting dates? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item number twelve, recommendation for amending the code of ordinances. And P D O C.
Yeah, John Shepard's going to come up and talk about that. And before he does, I just don't want to brag on John, just, just quickly hitting, hitting the streets about where we are, what we're doing. He has brought a lot of things that weren't being done into place. And just recently, and we don't, we don't have reasons, but the EPD has been heavily intrigued with what we're doing and how we're doing it. So, between him and Adam, Scotty and Jeff have had great discussions with EPD, Lisa Myler, who's in Albany, about our processes, what we're doing, water hookups, new subdivisions, regulations, what we aren't doing, et cetera, et cetera. So, it really was a good exercise to go through. But now I feel real confident with John's relationship with EPD and how we're looking at the stuff. We are, we're on task. So, John, if you'll just kind of go back and what Lisa Myler from EPD has said about this kind of history and what this means, so we have an understanding of what that is, I appreciate it.
Okay. Started with EPD reviewing our water plans, in particular, the Oaks Apartments over at Carpenter Road. The state passed a law that requires multi-unit residential facilities to have the apartments individually metered, so you can monitor how much water is going to each apartment. And this facility, the Oaks, did not do this. So, Lisa basically told us that was a big no-no. And she has requested that we include that into the ordinance now, the state law. And that's what sections B and C are. B is requiring multi-unit residential buildings to be individually metered. Section C is for retail units to be individually metered. And this is based on State Code twelve five one eighty point one. And the other item we added was section D, which is a master meter on these multi-unit facilities. This is a result of EPD considers our responsibility ending at the water meter. Typically, in the past, cities' responsibility is even ending at the right-of-way. But based on their review on some of our plans, where we have meters up near the building, they said our responsibility extends to those meters. So, this would allow us to have meters at the right-of-way, so our responsibility for the infrastructure to end at the right-of-way. And we would be going on private property repairing, private water mains to keep EPD happy.
So, the way this works, and I'll just give you a overview, if someone wants to build something, let's just say apartments, the engineer will do the plans, architect, et cetera. They'll send them to John and Danny to look over. We do our thing with them. And what he's referring to is if, if we have a new tie-in on water, what we have to do, we have to send those plans to EPD for they, so they could look at it. So, there's been some interruption with that, with procedural issues. And what now Lisa's citing as something we probably should have done in two thousand and twelve, if I remember right, with this master meeting, master metering. So, it would probably our, our responsibility to say, hey, look, contractor, you need to put in these individual meters. You can't have the one master meter anymore. So, it's, the city is a checking balance, so we don't really get in the way, but the developers need to know this certainly is not a city of Tipton thing. And EPD is laying this down to us, saying, you have not been following the rules. I'll let it go this time, but going forward, you have to make sure that when John checks it, as our, as the city engineer, these things, these, this protocol and these, these procedures are in place, so we can inform developers. So, that's the way it works. Again, I can't say, just great things, John has really reached out to EPD and just really made the relationship much better because we really didn't have one a few years back. So, so far, so good, but I wanted to comment that, that it's not a city of Tipton.
You have an apartment downtown or a building downtown, and you're on the second floor of a park.
Well, you mean with water? Well, it, they would not be a new tie-in, it'd just be a new service, so they would have a meter.
Or an individual meter, you can call that, or?
They would, it'd probably be mostly individually, depending on where it comes in the building. So, apartments are like that, these are much, much different, a lot of tie-ins. But a lot of these new developments, new residential homes, new tap-in to the water lines, everything has to be approved by EPD before the contractor does any of that.
Do, do rules say renovated or following a casualty or condemnation does not have to be these requirements?
Downtown would apply, we just, we'd have-
It's just new construction.
It's just new construction, okay.
Again, that, this is not a, a new rule for the city of Tipton, this is an EPD state law regulation.
State mandate, Georgia.
Yeah, state mandate, exactly.
What does EPD, Georgia EPD or?
It's be Georgia.
Georgia D and, yeah, EPD, EPA is the, that's, that's right.
Yeah, so we, you know, we're a little behind and we're caught up now. I just, I want, we're going to keep emphasizing that to our developers, it's obviously going to be some costs to them. But, you know, we're just doing our job and we, we have to stay in the good graces of EPD, obviously, on this big-ticket stuff because they, they laid it down to us. And again, it's, sometimes it's a learning process, sometimes, you know, we have other people to do it, but we have the procedures now in place that I'm real, real comfortable with. But if it's okay, we'll draft the language, make sure we have the specifics, we'll have that for the next meeting because really Lisa wants, EPD, she really wants us to get this in our ordinances. So, um, we really need to follow suit and make sure this is done.
The other thing is we also have to work with the county to get them included in their ordinance, please.
We will, we'll certainly do that, we'll communicate that.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Sean, appreciate that. All right, now we are to the section of our agenda where we will discuss resolutions. And the first resolution is setting the qualifying fees. Jessica, do you need to go over anything on that or?
Y'all should know, this, y'all, it's based on your salary and salary hasn't changed. So, the qualifying fees are the same as previous years and up reelection is Mayor and Jack and Frank.
Okay.
Two and four?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so qualifying fee for Mayor would be two eighty-eight, City Council District two and four, two oh seven.
Say double, they run up on hours.
You could watch out.
So, uh-
All right. Okay, the next item is the resolution proclaiming Rhythm and Ribs Barbecue Festival as a festival. And we did that last year and that is coming up. The festival day will begin on March the first, two thousand and nineteen, and conclude on March the third. A copy of that resolution is in your, in your packet. And that really relates to the alcohol sales is the reason we need to do this. Is there anything we need to know, Rob, or need any, any changes or any?
No, I think nothing's changed from the others.
Okay, all right, any questions, comments on that resolution for that? All right, the next two items under our resolution heading is for new alcohol licensing. One is for Gold Mine Five located at seven oh one East Second and one is for Aiden Food Mart located at one thousand five East Well. Jessica, any comments on those?
They're a change of ownership.
Okay.
They're existing, currently open, they're just changing ownership.
Okay, all right, any questions on those, and those applications are in our packet? All right, next we have under other business, our board reports, and a copy of that is in our packet. So, you can look and see who has applied for consideration where we have vacancies. Now, we, we appointed, we, I think we have, the Housing Authority is now is up to speed and, and is functioning as a full board. We do have some vacancies on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Historic Preservation Commission, Tipton-Tip County Tourism, William Bowen is interested in being reappointed, as you can see, and then Keep Tipton Beautiful. And you can see the applications, so any discussion or questions, comments, we can, we can go to that now.
So, reach, reach back out to William Bowen?
Yeah.
He's interested and so is Mr. Deale by the time.
And they've both been very good board members for those, their respective boards. All right, and you can see the applications we have on file. So, um, just consider that for our next meeting and we'll review and, and make those appointments as we need to. All right, the next item is our City Manager Report. Steve, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked Ricky to come up and just kind of give an overview, including about landfill update. I can't recall how many inches he said with rain, but again, as lessons learned, him and his team are on top of it every day, every Saturday, but with our weather, I just don't want a repeat of last time, so I asked him to come forward just to kind of give you a glimpse of what we're encountering. We have communicated with the county in an attempt to get some help. It looks as though Ricky and I are going to have to go outside to work with contractors to do what we need to do with regards to road building, et cetera. So, but before, you know, anything was said, I wanted to make, I wanted you to hear from him, what he's encountering and what, what, what he's experiencing here with this, with this weather. It really has been a challenge, so we have the pictures up.
They, they've got a picture up here, just a little visual to show you. First one there, we've met with the engineers several times. Last time was a couple of weeks ago, I had him come and visit, revisit because of the issue Pete was referring to was back in the summer when we had unusual summer rain and it caused a lot of issues on top of the, uh, the hill there where we were working and we had to move to a different area. But what you're seeing up there is the plans have been set for roads. We need passable roads. Right now, we don't have that, we don't have the manpower. As Pete said, we've reached out to try to get some manpower to build these roads. But the darker areas is what you see up there are the, uh, few, the roads that they are planning for us to put in, the engineers. One is on the east side, which is on your right, if you're looking up there. That is the east side, it's a very long road there, it's probably, you know, six hundred feet. You got another one down in the bottom corner right to access that area. And then there, kind of to the left in the middle, is another access road. And you need multiple access roads because of the weather. We've learned that, you know, you just can't go up one way. We have an off-road truck that hauls all the dirt. It really causes a lot of damage to the roads as it travels because of the weight and everything that, carrying all the soil to the top. But, uh, and, you know, our, our engineers are encouraging us to immediately get these done, or we will be, you know, in serious trouble.
Who was contacted at the county?
Well, I've, I've, I've sent some messages to the-
And no response?
I've not had a response.
Let's, let's just, we just got to move forward.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
And get it fixed.
Yeah.
That, that's what part of this is, is just to let you know where we're going.
Yeah, I, I don't want any, any fabrication.
We manage, we manage it, so we just, you know.
We need to be-
I want you to hear it first, and again, everyone knows we've had a lot of, it's soaked everywhere, so you imagine taking that and putting it on the landfill, just in your knowledge.
To let you know, as you were saying, we've got sixty-five inches of rain this past year compared to thirty-eight previous years, forty previous years. So, and some of that, on a daily basis, comes, you know, ten inches of rain at one time. And there's nothing we can do, you know, with it.
Give me a snapshot, Ricky, what, what you're encountering.
All right, John, from good to the next. This is just to let you know, you know, now we're in a different setup, we're in our vertical process. To the right, you see existing phase three and one, area, area one and two, that was wide open. Now, we're, we're down, narrowing down, trying to come back and reclaim some of the lost airspace, you know, from doing the horizontal, so the vertical reclaimed a lot. So, as you see how much smaller the areas get where we have to work. So, we'll encounter, you know, even more problems with rain and customers, of course, get a little irritated because we can't get ten trucks up there at one time. We can only get two to three up there at one time. So, that's a little bit of encounter there. Okay, John, this is right now, we're accessing this area. As you can see right here, it's, it's not raining now for what, since Friday? But it's still with, it's coming out of the side of the hill, as, you know, stormwater. It's, as, in your yard, you can walk out in your backyard.
I can't walk out of the backyard.
Right, I can't either.
Just saw you say that.
But that, that's what we're encountering here, is, is, it's not just rain, it's the effects after. That people don't quite understand that this is a continuous thing.
But the biggest thing is that Ricky has the road repairs, so that the trucks were backing. You see the garbage up on the hill, what he's doing, he's filling the ledge where the garbage is. So, again, when you're working this way with a machinery, very, very time-consuming and, and sometimes dangerous, but the point is, it's, it's been raining, but the, the ground where the trucks are backing in is-
We have not had any access problems with that. Our problems come in the, some of the other areas with all the rain. Okay, John, as, as you can see, this is the top where we had issues before. We had it all worked out and now this is, we're back in this area again hauling dirt. And as you see, our off-road trucks, what it does to the area. And this is continuous, as it, as it rains each and every day, even the off-road truck can't make it.
Garbage trucks do not go here. Garbage trucks do not go here.
Yeah, no, this is not.
This is for third purposes, it's on top of the landfill. And landfill, obviously imagine garbage and dirt and fluff etcetera becomes like a marshmallow. And you see the deep ruts, but that's what rain does, it, it really penetrates two foot down. By the time you put the big trucks on it, we get the big ruts, so it'll dry out, Ricky will come back, push it on a bulldozer and reestablish that. But I wanted to give you an idea, that's on the top, very top of the landfill. The key is, we don't see any garbage poking out, you don't see any garbage, you're just, you're seeing the ruts as the result of some of the rain.
Alright John, there is some positive aspects of the rain, we do have some grass growing now. So we finally started getting some grass here, so alright John. This is the problem areas, this is the unsafe, this is bulldozer tracks that started at the top and he slid all the way to the bottom. Trying to cover this slope to get the garbage covered. This is what the rain causes, you know, very unsafe conditions. And we, you know, we have to do it, I mean, we just have to do it.
Here we, we, we have to do, we, we've got to do something different. We, I mean, we, we cannot do something unsafe to get somebody hurt. I'm not, the answer is, we cannot do something.
This is to explain to you where we're at and what happens and why we may not be up to par with everything.
I appreciate not being up to par, we didn't get somebody hurt.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify, Ricky's, we're not dumping in this particular area anymore. So when, when the banks give way, the ideal is when we put garbage and we, it's our daily chore to cover it. When the dozer gets on the ledge and it can't track anymore and it slides, we come off it. So it's.
That was, that's what got us off of that one right there.
So, no, 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 we're not, we're not operating on this, I'm just showing you the result of what happened on the side of the landfill is.
But, but we've got to be aware and we can't put them up there where they do slide, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and that's, that's.
I appreciate stopping after the sliding, but we can't do the sliding.
Well, I want you to know too, that when EPD comes and says that's not good, you know, you gotta know too, that's why it's not good.
Well, they'll, they'll have to come and say not good and my answer to them is, nobody's in a hospital, so.
And that's, and that's what this is about, is an explanation to you for you to know. Alright, go ahead John. The other problem is the railing, which is washouts. We have to get in there and repair these, but as of right now, we cannot touch it because of the previous slide you just saw. Nothing will stay on the hills, we've had excavators out there reaching as far as we can reach to stay off the slope to try to repair these. But the excavator could not reach, you know, thirty feet up in the air.
Look at how blue the sky is.
Yeah, look how blue it is, that's wonderful.
We just, again Ricky, I just, I wanted to give you a snapshot of really where we were. Again, they're, they're really keeping up with it, the trucks are in route, Richard Golden hasn't, we haven't had any issues. So we, we're okay, but I'm, I'm giving you a kind of heads up from, from the community's aspect that.
And just to let you know too, not only do we fight rain, but our leachate, we have to recirculate it back up into the hill to keep it from overflowing. So you add water even under the ground, which makes it even worse.
Lot of things going on at once, but again, I, I don't want to revisit what we went through.
I've set up two appointments already with outside contractors just to come talk to me, consult with me. Give me some kind of idea of what it would cost to build the roads right.
And when do you think we might have access to that information?
Um, one of them will be coming to me tomorrow, another one will be coming next week.
So we should have it by the next meeting?
By the next meeting, I might can give you a little more information.
What is county commission meeting tomorrow, I think? I, I want to be able to make a presentation to county commissioner on this and then formally ask for their help with the roads.
He's already asked.
Well, I know, I know you've asked the manager, but my experience has been that sometimes the county commissioners don't always get the word.
I, I have a note in my office that, again, this is nothing but just to inform you. I had the intention of asking the county if they wanted us to do a presentation and we certainly will. I just, I want to make sure we're ahead of it, that no one is guessing what we're doing at the landfill. Cause we're, we are on top of it and making sure that we're doing what we need to.
And, and also, once we've notified Jim Carter, whoever, we move forward and do what's necessary. Do not wait one extra day, as far as I'm concerned, to take the actions necessary to fix this.
Emergency situation like this.
You know, you might give him twenty-four hours to respond, other than that, move forward and fix it the way it needs to be fixed. We're running it, we've given them the option to help, they don't want to respond, fix it, just don't wait.
Again, I just, I wanted to be upfront with, with all the water that we had, commend Ricky and Chad and the workers what we're doing with it. So I just, I, I just did it for informational purposes, for nothing else, to make sure that I tell you, we are on top of it. And we certainly are dumping the garbage each and every day, a little slower, but we're doing it, we're doing it safely. Thank you Ricky.
Thank you.
Mayor Kip?
Sure.
Was that okay? When I was in the mobile home business, we would move mobile homes in the areas of poverty like this. What we had, we had a company that had things sort of like these shipping flats that you see, or that were made out of boards about that thick. And they were big, they were big, but you could move them in there like with a front end loader and set them down. If you put those, and I, I saw it about two months ago, those, that all day, that we said we went to the store and we get all of that. So if we had those flats where we could move them up, they're laying one after the other, and we got them wide enough and we built them out of the big, about that wide. We could go and lay that thing in there and that wood will not give way, you can, you'd be amazed at how much it'll down if you get it right big.
Well, I, I wheel, wheel.
I do have a requirement for that too, we have tried it. You have over.
You have to put your bulldozers, your compacters back on the trash, back on the. To be able to move that garbage to where it belongs, it will not hold up to the bulldozer weight.
I don't think you can do it with the compact, I just thought about the roaders one day.
Yeah, we, we're, we're reclaiming rock, we're doing essentially the same thing and stabilizing that. So it's, I mean, it's a great thought, but we haven't, we haven't had any issues getting the trucks up yet, thank you.
I'm just gonna, I'm taking outside the box and I don't know if Austin does or whatever, but a conveyor system or something that, that dumps the trash off at the top of it. And then we get our trucks to, so basically anybody doesn't have to take, necessarily have to drive up the hill. Dump our location, it's dumped in a conveyor system, it's taken up to the top of the land, I mean, there weren't your fuel.
The modern term for that is transfer station.
Well.
You don't even go in dirt anymore.
That's in the box, it's the transfer station.
Well, I thought when you were talking about transport, that you were packaging it up and then hauling it somewhere else.
I did too.
Well, yes, they do, it's just, it's really costly, every time you touch garbage, there's a significant cost to it. Transfer station, yes, the ultimate.
Well, I mean, I know the upkeep, so once the road gets built, I saw what makes the next sixty-five inches of rain that come, it's gonna wash out that road. And then here we are in the same boat, and it's been, if you have to spend a million dollars to build a transfer station or whatever. You dump that stuff at the top of it, I mean, that might be another avenue to look at, it might cost you a lot upfront if you're gonna save on your.
You're designing right in the con, the, the engineer's perspective on building a road is building a road to specs. Meaning that it's designed, when you're talking about a foot and a half of, of base, you're talking about rock, you're talking about another, you know, coating of materials. So building a road that withstands all that, so at least we could stay, you know, in soft mud, the better. So the road is designed to get trucks up there, dump off, travel back around, and really not get stuck if it's done properly. So, you know, ten inch rain, you know, that road is gonna be, it's like just the same.
Were we still looking at transfer, at the option of a transfer station?
It, it's gonna be the final addendum, matter of fact, we're working on the addendums now for the RFP, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a.
That's the twenty nineteen project or, or twenty?
It's gonna be part of the RFP, you have to submit.
We're gonna continue to get, and they're going to get worse, and I won't mention climate change and all that global and all of that. But these type of storms and this kind of, that's exactly what the result of all this is. And if we think it's gonna get better, and we can figure it out, just cyclical, that's baloney. We will continue to see this kind of thing, either a drought.
As the, as the community grows, there'll be more and more trash to deal with. So, you know, it's, it's, um, it's, it's part of our planning process and, and how we're gonna deal with it and, and.
Yeah, it's, Wes, you guys got, I mean, they're billion dollar decisions. And it is really, it's such a complicated business, the more we spend, it seems the worse against. So we simplify things by eliminating our obstacles. And, and obstacles are working on the side of the slope in ten inches of rain with vehicles that just don't do well. Hundred and ten degree embankments, that just doesn't work. So every company, every landfill in South Georgia is undergoing the same thing we are, is that the truth?
Some of them have been closed these last days, you know, right? Been holidays that they're doing.
We're seeing, we're, just like climate change, we're seeing things that I've never heard of in my twenty years. Closing a landfill because it's, it's just too messy. New days. It's new, it's new days, we have to think like that. So anyway, thank you, I just wanted to give you a snapshot, the other, I asked Wayne to come up with purchase card implementation. This is the last kind of the phase, phase in for our VSNA, the administrative software. Things that we're trying to do to get more efficient, expedite the process, make it much more easier for the users and the departments. And then the bottom line is making it cost savings in the long run for us as we continue to purchase. But I've asked Wayne to give a kind of overview of purchase card implementation, he's ready to go with this. As, again, it's the last step, very, very simple, but could mean a whole lot for, for the city and for the department. So Wayne, just give a quick overview of what we're doing here.
Okay, currently we utilize one credit card, three charge cards. We have a credit card from BBNT, we have charge cards from Walmart, Staples and Lowe's. Which when a staff person needs one, they gotta come up to the finance department, check it out, go use it, bring it back. And it is probably causing them to waste, you know, when they just need to go to Walmart to grab something, wasting about an hour of time almost. Just to come up here, get the card, go, come back up here, just to use the card. The P card system, back when we got our banking RFPs, we got information about purchase cards and corporate cards from several of the banks. Also reached out and got information from the Georgia Department of Administrative Services has a state contract with Bank of America. Which they had, Bank of America has a purchase card program which the state uses and state allows, local governments also access that program. We looked at that also and we compared them, we decided we're gonna go with the Bank of America purchase card. Maybe for various reasons, number one, it's no cost to the city to use it. Two, we would online be able to access Bank of America's online works program, which allow us to manage the cards and to track and get reporting free. We also be able to generate rebates from the use of the card. There's a sliding scale which the turner first year is hopefully get ten thousand dollars of rebates from Bank of America for use of the card. It could go up from there, depending on how much we use. Also, we would also get visas of liability protection of up to a hundred thousand dollars per card user misuse. Also, we access their fraud detection system and this also in the end allow us to streamline some of the stuff with accounts payable for small purchases. Like somebody going, need to buy something from Walmart, instead of having to come and grab one card that will have, the department will have the card for each one of them. They can go use it, they come back, they upload a copy of the receipt and code their thing on the works program. And then we, at the finance department, have access to it also that we see it, and it should be a lot quicker and easier to use for everybody.
Good, so it's, it really is just a consolidation of what we're doing now, we're just eliminating the cards. But it'd be easy to track and much more efficient on, on the internal side. So it's, I wanted to give you a snapshot of what we're doing and, and why.
Private industry does this all the time, we probably see if we can buy some of this equipment on the card.
Yes, that's one of the things I've actually already talked to them about is, once we get implemented, we can utilize. I'd have to call them up, say, hey, we got a special purchase, we got a three hundred thousand dollar bulldozer I wanna buy. I need you to raise my little credit limit, watch for this one type cars. This company tell them who it's gonna be to, they'll see it, they'll be able to adjust it, we buy it, we pay for it and then they can adjust it back. Or they can adjust it almost immediately back then. That's if the company.
Some do, some don't, some let it put a limit with, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, they said that, that, they would work with us, no problem with, when we had things like that come up.
Good, thank you Wayne.
You're welcome.
Okay, just a couple more things, Pebblebrook Water Improvements, we are complete.
What? Wow.
We are complete and we haven't had, we haven't had any complaints whatsoever, so flushing, the initial, the last stage, I think it's cleared up. But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna send the word out to Greg Wood and to the county that Pebblebrook is done. So I hope the residents are real happy with that, it's a great project, glad we could deliver, so that was, that was huge. Also, John worked with the DOT, if you remember, that talks about the T-splosh. And one of the things that the state said is that alleyways, there was, there was some speculation that alleyways, if you had alleyways in your city. And you, when you applied for the elmig, the paving, that the state now was gonna not count the alleyways as roadways. So center mileage, that's how we use our, get our calculations. So we have X amount of miles in Tipton, Georgia. And the state said, well, we're not counting your alleys anymore towards your roadway or center line miles, which was kind of crazy. And John worked with the DOT, talked through that with them and said, alright, well look, if you name your alleys, put some street signs. And you put some traffic control stop signs at the end of the alleys, we'll count them. Well, we're going to do that, so we, we didn't lose the fifteen thousand dollars that the state wanted to take from our elmig money or the paving money for your streets in, in Tipton. So we, John did a good, great job working with, with the DOT saying, we are counting them and this is what we're gonna do. So if you see some new stop signs in our public, if, if you, if you see the traffic control measures go in, that's why. So the state acknowledges that we can count that as part of our monies, so it's, it's a good thing for us. Two more things, I'd like Chief Bennett to come up and talk about some things, this is a really cool concept that he's come up with. He is starting to do things, Brian, yeah, thanks for being here, about the fire department. And, and it's, I just, I'm real proud of this and I wanted him to kind of share what, what he's doing now with the fire departments. Chief, give a, give a snapshot.
Mayor, Council. First of all, I want to introduce Brian Alton, he's gonna be a new train officer for the fire department, Captain Cooper. He's gonna be retiring very soon, so it was time to get some younger person in the, in the spot. And to say he hit the ground running, there would be a understatement, he's more like a jet plane flying and having to kind of reel him in a little bit, but that's okay, it's a good thing. It's been very exciting, we've got a lot of young firefighters, what they're wanting to do and the type of training they want to do. Brian, he worked for the state of Georgia, teaching at the fire academy, so he's very well versed in, in all the new, um, different techniques used. It's like I told him, I'm old school and I'm used to doing it the old way, but you know, just because there's newer ways doesn't mean it's wrong. So I'm having to kind of step aside and let the newer stuff come out, some of the older guys are the same way. One of the things I'm, I'm really proud of is, is our volunteers, you know, we've had city volunteers ever since I've been there. And the number kind of dwelled down, you know, to where we had five. So me and Captain Sherrill went to ABAC, when they was doing their meet and greet at the first, you know, when they all get back, I can't think of the name of what it's called.
Allen Gown.
Yeah, so we go out there and we have a lot of people approach us and talk to us about it, this, that and the other, about the volunteer program, what it offers and all. So, long story short, we have fifteen new volunteers signed up. Just gonna go through a recruit school, taught by Brian, we've never had a recruit school, so this'll be, this'll be a first time for us. So if they all make it through it and pass, we'll have twenty volunteers, which will be, which will be a blessing to us in, in many different ways. They'll be able to, if we set them in the calendar and they're actually come spend the night with us, they're considered on duty, they're not considered volunteers. So we can count them one for one. If Brian comes from home at night and our volunteer comes from home at night to a structured fire, the count is three to one through ISO purposes, that's how they count. Cause you're not there, you're not immediately on the truck, so you, you don't get counted as one. These guys can actually, guys and gals, we've got several ladies that's, that's on board and, and we're excited about that. But they can actually stay at the station, they can stay at the station, the north station on Tipton Avenue or the west side, we got room for them. Put more people on trucks, which we, we only have to. we got room for them. Put more people on the trucks, which we, we only have two, now we could put three, four, five, depending on how many stays. But if if we was to send these to the academy, it would cost us about twenty-one thousand dollars to get them certified. So doing it at home, doing, and it takes eight weeks at the academy, we're gonna do it over a three month period roughly. About the end of that three months, we're gonna have some full-time openings that they're gonna be vying for, and also some part-time positions. So they have an opportunity to, once they get through this, actually be online firefighters, which which I think is a great thing. We always like to hire from within, promote from within, and do everything we can. So I believe this is a great thing. We're excited about it. They're excited about it. They've already rode a hundred and twenty hours in the last month, you know, volunteering their time before they hadn't even took the class. So I think that shows, that shows a lot in itself right there. But Brian's definitely gonna be an asset to the fire department of the city of Tifton. And I think you're gonna see some really good things coming in in their future.
That's exciting. Do you wanna, um, share with everyone about the, um?
Stair climb?
Yeah.
We had a stair climb challenge. A lot of, a lot of departments do it over the, over the nation, and, you know, they, they crawl up the, uh, if they have skyscrapers and they go up the steps wearing the gear and all. We don't have skyscrapers in Tifton, stair steppers at local gyms. So I put together a competition between the guys at the fire department on the stair climb challenge. If they could do fifty floors in full gear, breathing air, with the lowest time, win. And the first prize was a, first prize was a leather fire helmet, which if you're in a fire service, that's a, that's a big deal. Leather fire helmet or something, you know, it's nice. So, but we had nine guys participate, and the, the winning time was seven minutes and fifty-four seconds, which was outstanding, and still had, and still had eight hundred pounds of air left in his tank. That was, that was the impressive part. Making it to it in the time was one thing, but still having plenty of air left was amazing. That just shows you that our physical fitness that we've been doing is really paying off. Our physical agility times went from fifteen minutes to ten minutes, and the last shift that did it, did it in six minutes. So that just shows you that, you know, what they're doing is is working. They're losing weight. I've lost ten pounds, I'll let you get that. My head's still big. But it's, it's been a good thing, so we, we hope we can continue on with the pace that we're going.
Thanks, chief. Yeah, I'm excited to have the first recruit class, so we'll keep you posted.
Brian, we're glad to have you with us too. Thank you.
Lastly, the hometown holidays event. I met with the committee. Decision was rendered that we're gonna put it off and plan a bigger and better hometown holiday event this coming Christmas. So we're not gonna try to reschedule half of a celebration, so I just want to let you know that. And the board knows that, and all the merchants and sponsors were contacted. So until next, until this coming year, that's all I have.
Real quick, we've talked about waters. Over on, is it Murray, you know, where we've got these, these pipes running down the street between?
Ridge?
Is it Ridge and Twenty Second or what? Anyway, we run that whole block and half of another block.
Yes.
What's, what's the status of doing something with that?
Well, we, we thought we were, we had it low enough where we can put the cameras in, and then the rain came again. So we have replaced a pump in the listation right there on Ridge, and it worked, really worked well. We brought the levels down, and we did what's called bypassing. So we shut some flow off and sent it off to Tifton Avenue, because in Ridge, for years, our flows are, are, well, what's happening, we're getting water somehow infiltrating into the sewer. So we bypassed it, we dropped the levels down, and all of a sudden, we got the rain again. Well, we're just almost into high flow again. So Scotty made the decision to put the pumps back into place to make sure we don't have to spill where it came out right there in front of a couple homes. So as soon as we get the water levels down, we're bringing in some specialists, we're going to do what's called smoke testing. And we think we have it isolated up, up by top by the Fendi clinic, in the top section of Twenty Eighth, where that water's coming out. And I'm guessing that we have some voids in some pipes that's allowing rainwater to get into the sewer. And that's called INI, or infiltration of the sewer system. And once we smoke it, and we, if we have smoke coming out of the ground, certain culverts, certain pipes, we hope to find what, what the answers are. As soon as we drop the levels, we're gonna send the camera in on Ridge, and we're going to crawl those things up the sewer to see if we can find anything else that's going on. But we're gonna fix this problem. We just have to have enough time to get the levels down with the water. But it's, it really is remarkable on, on the flows that we're seeing coming in that section. So no matter what it takes, I can imagine for years and years, what, what the residents have seen. And it just wasn't.
A lot of her.
It wasn't.
Haven't we all? Yes, I know.
This is a longstanding problem, but we're here, we're, we're zeroing in on it. All's I need is a break in the weather. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That is it for me.
All right, excellent. We'll go around the table very quickly for each council representative to add any comments, ideas, concerns. Jack, was that yours?
Yeah, I mean, that, that was mine. I mean, I'm, and I hope that the, we're done with these wells starting back up, or the, you know, the tanks, because we did have this issue.
You know, we had, we had the, we had well eight come back on, which is a great thing. That's the one that got struck by lightning. It came on, it disturbed the pipes, but that is in proper flow, and we are.
It is. We did not receive any calls today about any of those.
It is ending, hopefully, and we have someone coming in to talk more exclusively about our flushing program, and we could isolate some of these areas. We have to be a little more regimented with that, so we would get this rusty water out of our pipes. So I appreciate everybody's patience.
All the water hydrants are now finished and put in place.
That project is not complete. Twenty-one hydrants have been replaced so far. So we're kind of evaluating our budget, although it was light item, is the way it works. We're processing, we're evaluating the budget and making a plan for the next phase. So it's not complete, but twenty-one of them have been.
We're, we're close. There may be a couple. We hit.
Ten at the most is what we may be able to do. Some of those are on state routes, and I don't think the budget will allow them now.
We, we are just kicking up so much dirt and sediment, we just told them to stop until we, we understand where we're going. So we have a couple more to go, but overall, it's been, it's been great. But we, we've just done a lot of maintenance with this well, with fire hydrants. It's, it's normal, but it's not normal, and we've got to dress the, the flushing, and we've got to, we won't eliminate it, but we need to minimize the dirty water. So we understand.
All right, excellent. Wes, do you have anything?
I'm good.
All right. Johnny? You good? All right.
That's it?
All right. Well, let me throw something out to y'all. On February the seventh, seven thirty that morning, we will have the second annual mayor's prayer breakfast. So hold that date open on your calendar. We've got a wonderful committee that's working on this with us. Tony McBrayer is going to be the speaker. As you know, he has the peanut butter and Jesus ministry. One of our new county commissioners that's being sworn in, and former state representative. And so we're real excited about the, the mayor's prayer breakfast, and I appreciate very much the committee that's, and Morgan's been wonderful. She's, she's really spearheaded this, and so we're excited about that on February the seventh, so just mark your calendar. All right, anything else that needs to come before the council? If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you.